Consent calendar, we apologize. We just actually received this, this is our IGA with the state of Oregon to transfer the child support enforcement services as a service from the county to the state. The state does need this in place prior to your next board meeting. So staff will work on getting this added to the packet, but you will need to make an amendment and Vice Chair will get you the actual language and and board member staff are working on this real time and and quickly.
So we're just gonna make a one of us is gonna make a motion to add this to the consent.
Yep, yes, to amend your rules.
Suspend a rule to allow that to happen, is that the issue?
So how the mayor's former mayor's bump in unprocedural. I agree, so so I'm I'm comfortable with that. I'm comfortable and I think it's important that we make sure that we get this done so that we can move forward with the work that has to be done.
I will just note for members of the public, this is an action that your board has considered through budget process this year. There are from a staff perspective, no surprises in the IGA. It's us, it's a transfer of service from one governmental entity to another, which needs to be documented in process. Completely understandable from the state perspective, if they're assuming this service, you want to make sure that we have all the paperwork in place by the date. So just thank you, Board, for the short notice and accommodating this in your agenda tonight.
And ask just one question to that, there was nineteen people, I believe, we had employed and after the state employee all nineteen.
So one clarification, there were three attorneys, which the attorneys have been transferred into other positions within the district attorney's office. There were sixteen child support enforcement staff, those sixteen staff were offered positions with the state. All but one employee chose that route, the other employee is going to enjoy retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work and getting this done as well. And it's also my understanding that we got this information from the state very late as well. So I just want to say that.
As in today.
So another.
Real time.
Not our stuff. Now we.
Let's go Rick.
I'm getting, wait a minute, just a minute, we've got it, we've got a conference going on here.
We're fine. So happy you're seeing real time problems. Washington County team.
Oh, we heard nothing.
If any.
Whisper so quietly.
If anything changes, we will let you know, we just need to make sure all the paperwork is in place and everything is dotted correctly. So if anything changes, we'll update your part.
Thank you for your attendance to this. So we'll start with leadership comments, thank you Commissioner Willie, we'll start with Rick.
All right, great, good afternoon, CDWS Board of Directors, I have a handful of announcements to make today. I'll start off in reporting that we had our all leaders meeting last week, that includes all of the supervisors and managers at Clean Water Services. Major part of our organization was present. I want to give many thanks to the Chair and the Vice Chair who showed up and attended, made some great remarks. And I think the staff really benefited from the open question and answer session. Much appreciated, I heard comments many secondhand, some firsthand, that they thought this was the best all leaders that we've had in a in a long time. So that was off to a good start with that meeting. I did also announce at that meeting that we will be changing from Sage, which is the Strategic Advisory Group, to the executive, to the simpler executive leadership team. And we're taking a fresh look at that structure with the goals of improving efficiency and sort of direct lines of communication throughout the organization.
Good, because I could never remember what Sage did.
Yeah, it puts too much pressure on me to have this Sage thing as well, so.
Isn't also the company that used to occupy the news.
Yes. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Just to make it extra. Leadership changes, Jack Lang, our Chief Business Operations Officer, let me know that he is resigning effective July 2nd. He's been with us since 2021 and we wish him the very best in his new endeavors. I will just state that I'm not intending to refill Jack's position, I think this is a good opportunity to work with the ELT and the directed staff to find ways to really streamline that group as well and and have some great options. Like we'll bring forward for how to reorganize without needing to refill that position. On quick, as part of resolution in order twenty five dash five, we've been conducting our expedited domicile review. Got some results back and I want to share, just to get you all up to speed, Arizona is looking to be the top slot at this point in time. Hawaii is second, so I'm moving forward with the team to the next phase, which understand the cost and timing of making that type of move, that's the next critical piece for us to really develop a plan and a recommendation. We'll have that information by July fifteenth.
Are you, can I?
Yes.
Please, please. Discussions. Great, thank you for your updates, I have a quick question. While you're doing the domicile review, I remember there were conversations about if the state of Oregon could potentially be. Are you looking into that as well or?
Unfortunately, at this time, they are not a viable option for us, but we certainly will keep track of Oregon.
Would you articulate why Oregon isn't a viable option? I mean, we've had discussions, but for the public viewing. Commissioner, I I had the opportunity to talk to Rick yesterday and my understanding is we're gonna get a presentation with all the criteria that will explain why Oregon, as well as other states, were not at the top of the list. Is that, does that address? Yeah, that's good, I mean. And that's on the. Appreciate it, if you included that in your updates, it would be fair and transparent, but yeah. Do you know with the timeline of when that presentation will happen then?
It will happen in July, yeah. July eighteenth, yeah, but I'm happy to share those materials. It has to do with needing to own stock is one of the reasons that Oregon is not viable, true, I understand.
I think we just have to be super clear to why Oregon isn't a viable option. I think that generated a lot of questions and and most of them aren't criticism questions, they were more like curiosity questions. I think the board knows and I think we've been convinced and prior board has been convinced why outside Oregon is a viable option. But what's happening, I think it's your leadership, it'll be, it'll go, it'll go alongs way if we articulate that.
The group that came to, you know, do the education session were pretty clear that the short version of this is because the state of Oregon's insurance regulatory agency has literally no experience doing this. That was their short answer, that is not something that you want to be first in on.
They didn't even make the list of the top fifty, is that top thirty? They didn't make the list and so.
Just, yeah, at this point, but that said, when we present, we will make sure that there is a specific slide on Oregon and and why that is not making the list. It could change over time, when this first started, Arizona was not highly ranked, they got a lot of experience and now they are looking very attractive, so hopefully Oregon is able to.
I also agree with Commissioner Phi from the standpoint that as Oregonians, you wonder why your state isn't there. So that and that's, I think, the message, so and a clear explanation will be great, thank you. Ms. Angie.
I'm need to read my notes from my phone because my computer decided to do updates and now I can't access the files I need, so real time. And I take pride in my memory, but not all the time. So really proud to announce that we have completed our internet transition. If you were in the building last week, on Friday, you may have had challenges getting online.
I don't mean in the building, but.
At home too.
At home, yeah.
Well, I apologize for that interruption, however, this is about making us more into internet independent here at the county. I previously have briefed your board of service interruptions that we were receiving with how our internet was delivered. Service interruptions in a twenty four seven system are really problematic. And so our IT team has been on this path for actually several years. And this is transitioning our interdependence from the broadband user group known as BUG, which is a multi governmental partnership, marking the end of over a year of technical planning and nearly a decade of effort working with our partners for a smooth transition out of BUG. This milestone reflects the resilience, creativity and dedication of our IT staff led by our IT Director Luke Ross, who worked tirelessly, including through the night, to manage everything from infrastructure planning to the complex system cutover. While, of course, a few bugs emerged, such as impacting even my connectivity last week and trying to problem solve through this, the team did swiftly address them. So this helps us also in times of disaster of having this this resilience in place with our technology systems. I'm also thrilled to share that the county has published its first popular annual financial report. This was a goal that I set out for finance two years ago and with all the other opportunities that have emerged, I actually forgot about this challenge because we had other new opportunities and low and behold, the team pulled it through this year. So just really expressing appreciation for that. And so what is the importance of the PAFR? The PAFR brings to storytelling really the complexities of the CAFR, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which if you have a finance background, it is probably more interesting and understandable to read. But how are how are finances are managed? And how they are used is incredibly important from a taxpayer transparency. And so the Popular Annual Financial Report really brings that to life. I also want to just mention in your board statement, it was indicated that we have that I've entered into a contract with a consultant to help us work through the next five weeks of ensuring that we meet federal compliance for our federal grants and contracts. That contractor is Espazo Strategies led by Janelle Bell, the CEO. For just context, Janelle had actually helped the county draft the county's equity resolution. Janelle is working with other entities in the region navigating this complexity of time. I just really appreciate Espazo coming forward so quickly and their continued partnership with the county. For context, Espazo has worked on other county initiatives. We do have a standing contract with Espazo for additional communications capacity. They've also worked with many departments, including LUT, on transportation planning and incorporation of equity, equity lens into transportation. So more to come, we are rapidly working on that scope of work and we'll be sharing that in upcoming leadership updates and making sure that information is also publicly available. And that concludes my update.
Thank you, over to you, Alex.
Commissioners, one substantive update for you today, I think your board is aware that Oregon Health Authority has elected to extend our county financial assistance agreements for community mental health through thirty one December of this year. So it doesn't solve the ultimate issue, but it does give us a little more room to work with the state and with other counties on that issue. And then I'm just on a personal, I'm sorry.
Doesn't that also include the the statement about consistent with previous funding levels?
That's correct.
I just want to make sure that that's the important statement.
Yes, yeah. And then just on a personal note, I think I've had the chance to meet with each of you at this point, so I really appreciate as part of my onboarding process, you taking the time out of your schedules to sit down with me and week three, but who's counting? I'm looking forward to working with you for a long time, thank you.
Been an easy.
Who is your favorite, Alex? Who's meeting?
Lead the fifth on that. All five, that's a good answer.
All five.
Boy, Commissioner Phi, you're on thin ice. All right, with that, let's go to board member updates, who would like to go first?
Mine's easy.
Okay.
Because we had Juneteenth Thursday, so we had that off Friday, I was supposed to take my grants on fishing, but weather eighty six that. So I moved that to the thirtieth, so it'll be a week from Monday, I'll be doing that. I had Commissioner Teresa and I went to Congressman Bonamici's meet and greet for the pre meeting there and with a few other electives around town, it's always good to chat with her kind of to get the personal insights of what she's going through and what the federal government's going through. I will be tomorrow, I will be at Metro President's State of the Region Address at the Oregon Zoo. I don't know who else amongst you are gonna be there, but that should be should be a good meeting other than that. I don't have anything else, other.
Thank you.
Less than a minute.
Wow. I would like to go next.
Last Wednesday, I attended the Community Action or I had a Community Action Board meeting. Continued discussions around the implications for federal contracts and funding there, no surprise, but just to report that out, I also managed to get former Mayor Truax nominated as Vice Chair of that board, so eventually he will likely become Chair. Thursday, despite it being Juneteenth, I had a meeting with the organization that is trying to build a battery stored, large battery storage project in my district outside Sherwood. And Stephen, if they haven't already contacted you, I think you can expect contact from them, so just a heads up there. They're working through some challenges. Friday, I met with a Walton City Councilor and then we also had the Public Safety Coordinating Council Legislative Debrief. I think that teams a little bit frustrated with some of how things went with funding in Salem during this session.
Join the long line.
Yeah. So and that's just, just a heads up, Saturday, we had an acre retreat. Yesterday, I met with a Tiger Chamber CEO and then also had a one on one with county administrator. Today, I'm meeting actually for dinner with a one on one with Mr. Shanley, CWS CEO. I'm gonna be at County College and hopefully graduating if I get my time in on Friday night.
You will.
So no, I I will be graduating.
Captain gown.
Don't think so, and I don't think, I don't think my family will be there either, but there is some sort of ceremony, I understand. Then Saturday is the Tiger Pride Parade, so wanted to mention that I'll be be there as well. I think that's at three o'clock on Saturday.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
Great, Commissioner Phi. Next. Congratulations, my AOC county training was online, so I don't know.
You didn't get a big graduation ceremony.
Yeah. Or probably the also the quality of the content you're learning, it's also probably not the same as what I got.
Probably.
Last week, well, let me start off and say tomorrow, no, Wednesday and Thursday, I'll be off. So I'm taking some time off and then back maybe Friday and then. But last week, I want to give you two things, one, I really had the opportunity to attend the Latino Cultural Festival in Hillsborough, that was so much fun and I had the opportunity to speak as well. The more, this is how much fun it was, I couldn't get my three boys to leave that event. And and I tell you, I was running out of cash and I refused to use my cards. I was like, we're we're coming, we made plans to go in with some dollars and I tell you, we kept pulling that twenty, so many good food and it was really well worth it because you know, the community members that are selling their businesses, not only is it quality and healthy stuff, just feels good to support community members in these times. And then, you know, just so that there are no surprises, especially from me, yesterday I had the opportunity to participate in a press conference and I wanted you all to hear the speech I gave so that there are no surprises, there's no out of context. I think I've I've heard some people who said, did you say this and did you say that? So this is what I said in the full context, thank you to everyone who stood up here today. You reminded us why we are here, to stand against fear, against cruelty and to stand for humanity. I'm not speaking for Washington County as a whole, I speak today from lived experience as a mother, a refugee, a public servant and a neighbor who loves this community deeply. We're living through a moment where fear is being weaponized for clicks, for cloud and for control, not just in Washington DC, but right here in our streets, in our schools and in our politics. That may be clear about where I stand, I stand for fairness, I stand for safety, I stand for dignity for every person who calls this place a home. I was born in Somalia, a country torn apart by civil war, my family fled not for comfort, but for survival. We crossed borders under moonlight, a refugee camp became our home and we prayed for a second chance. America and more specifically Oregon was that second chance. And I often ask myself, what if we hadn't made it? Would would I be here raising a family, serving in public office, giving back to the very state that took us in? That question fuels how I lead because behind every debate about immigration policy is a real human story like mine. A child praying for safety, a mother hoping for stability, a family searching for home. Recently, our local law enforcement leaders stood up and affirmed a simple truth. I think this is the right version I read, we will not be supporting or assisting any immigration enforcement activities. We will not be used as tools of federal immigration enforcement. They reaffirmed Oregon's sanctuary law, they committed to building trust, not fear. That matters because when people are afraid of their own government, they stop calling the police, they stop going to the doctor, they disappear from public life and that makes us all less safe. This is not about national politics, this is about who we are right here in Washington County. And I believe this, we can protect our neighborhoods without prosecuting our neighbors, we can uphold the law without tearing apart families and we can lead with strength without losing our soul. Leadership is not about chasing the loudest voices, it's about anchoring ourselves in the deepest values. So to every immigrant, every refugee, every child watching this moment, I see you, I believe in you and I will keep standing up for you, not because it's easy, but because it's right, thank you. And that was my full context of my speech and it was a really great turnout and and I've gotten a lot of good feedback. And I didn't run out of time. No, you didn't, no, you didn't, thank you, thank you for your report and thank you for sharing with us. Alrighty, my turn, I guess, here. It's been, several things have been covered, last last Tuesday, I did go to Bonamici's event. Wednesday, I stopped by the CDWS All Leaders Conversation and that was, it was really good to be there, I appreciate it. And I'm hoping into the future that the commissioners will be alerted as to when those events are, so we all can come. It was, it was really good. Last Friday was a really interesting day for me, I went on a boat tour, it was part of, it was arranged by RDPO and I sit on RDPO, the purpose was to tour the Critical Energy Infrastructure Hub that's along the Columbia River from like oh Fremont Bridge up to Sobeys Island where you see the big oil storage tanks. The purpose was to understand the impact of the storage there in case of a disaster. So if there were to be a, you know, a significant earthquake, that that area would liquefy and that 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 storage of energy would be subject to, you know, open containers and fires and that type of thing. What what really hit home to me is that if you think about the Valdez incident that was many years ago in Alaska, they released eleven, I believe it was eleven million gallons of oil. This would release two hundred million gallons, all of the storage. So it gives you context as to how big this is and it's a serious issue, certainly sits in Multnomah County, but it's my view that we are all partners in this region. And so as we look to the future, it's something that we should be aware of as well. So and supporting the our our fellow counties and cities as they address this issue. On Saturday, we had the acre retreat, I want to take a minute to thank everybody that attended, it was really a good discussion. The, we had two guests in the room, Marcus Monday and Mary Manso. They were, they were guests, but they were also really engaged, it was, it was great to have them there. The discussion that was led by Janelle Bell was really a good discussion about how we can get through the next steps. As we talked about the coming five weeks of meetings, I want you all to know that ACRE, ACRE asked if they could meet weekly to participate in this process, so you're gonna see month.
They were very committed.
Yes, yes, thank you, Jason. They were, they were very committed and it was, we will commit to one meeting a week, we will commit to subcommittees, whatever it takes to get this work done. So I I felt very positive when I left, to the point where the people that were still there, we all took a group picture. We're not exactly sure where that's going to go yet, but it will be, it will be recorded. So it was, it was a, it was a hard day, but it was also a very productive day. And a special shout out to Tanya for the work that you did and pulling that together and also changing your schedule to allow for that, Tanya took, I'm gonna keep saying it was the red eye. Took the red eye home from San Antonio, Texas to be able to participate the next day in this, so thank you for your leadership around.
Alicia's facilitation was.
Yes, thank you.
As well in planning.
Thank you, Commissioner Snyder, for that. I quickly, I also attended the Latino Cultural Festival and my speaking points were directed at the impact of small business from the Latino businesses in relationship to Washington County. And it was, it was in support of the relationship between the chamber and the county. So it was really good to be there, lots of people, lots of fun, lots of energy, it was very, very positive. And nice to see the Hillsborough Hops open their stadium to that event. I I also want to tell you that I talked with Chief Deputy Alro K, they're really excited about the sheriff's office is gonna be spotlighted in the TV series Cops, I don't know if you watched that, but it's they're filming right now, so that's, that's gonna be a cool thing.
Thirty eighth second, thirty eighth section.
Season. Season thirty eight. And yesterday, I I'm making a commitment. Commissioner Willie, the Vice Chair, leave the Vice Chair alone. I'm not sure what my thirty eight.
Thirty eighth season, we're not gonna see it.
It's third, no, it's the third and eighth season of the show.
Moving on.
Anyway, thank you, thank you, thank you.
I'm not gonna be around for that thirty eighth season.
You're right, you're right, okay, so yesterday I spent time at Clean Water Services Central and it was really nice to spend time in the office, I need to get a badge to be able to get in and out, that's on the way. But just being there and talking to people, I would encourage you all to take time to sit in one of the hotel offices there and work away, it's all the connections work really well. I'm going to the Metro President's State of the Region and I'm going to be at Metro for the Impact Meeting and then I'll be at Metro for the ARWAC meeting and that's my report.
You hadn't screwed up the episode, dang it, you made.
So with with that, let's move on, please, do our first presentation this morning. So this is gonna be on the annual audit review response and I would like to invite not interim, but our Chief Financial Officer. And I would like to invite, not interim, but our Chief Financial Officer, John Steyer, to the table along with Molly Rogers. Congratulations to you.
Takes a lot of seasons.
Never gonna live.
Thank you, John.
All right. Good afternoon, board. I'm John Steyer, the Chief Financial Officer and Treasurer. Today, we get to talk about audit, very exciting topic in the actual world. Hopefully for our viewers online and others in this room. But on the 23rd of May, TKW, our external auditors, Talbot, Orvola, and Warwick, completed our annual audit for the FY24 budget year. And I will make note that that is, um, not as timely as we like, not because of TKW, because of our ability to provide, uh, to produce the ACAFR, the Annual Consolidated Financial Report, check copy here, and also the federal, uh, schedule of federal awards documents, which are needed for the auditor to audit. So, so they were completed on the 23rd of May, and then on the 4th of June, our audit committee met and reviewed the results of the audit report. Audit Committee meets twice a year, um, and they're very cordial, they're very engaged, they're very supportive of our staff. I really appreciate that. But today, I just want to talk about what's in the audit report. And as part of that is also to kind of give you, um, I guess, the basics of what, what is the audit? What is the ACAFR? For those that don't know, um, save a little education on that. And then we're gonna talk about, um, how we're gonna fix some things, the findings that are in the audit report. And, uh, on the consent agenda tonight, we have, um, consent agenda to revise what we're talking about in here, our recommendations. Um, it's required to go to the state audit division as how we're gonna fix things. Um, and so that's on the consent agenda tonight. We're gonna talk a little overview about it and why it matters. And then we'll get into the schedule findings and our trends, the recommendations. So what is a financial audit? It's a, it presents a fair and material correct, materially correct representation of an entity's activity and financial position through expressing an opinion. And our TKW external auditors have provided us an unmodified opinion, which I'll talk more about later, but that basically means it's a reliable and reflects, our documents are reliable and they reflect the position and performance of the organization. And why do we need that? Well, it's a requirement by law that we get audited annually. Um, but it also provides transparency and identifies areas where we're doing well, that areas where we might need to improve, and also verifies that our internal controls are in place and operating, and helps us to perform better. Annual Consolidated Financial Report, um, is the big document, so it's about 300 pages. It's a set of financial statements that we use to make sure that, well, we produce these in line with the GASP, so the Government Accounting Standards Board describes our spending as well as our assets and liabilities. And it's issued by municipalities, and so that report reads the same across different government organizations, that you can compare one entity to another and understand the financial position of the organization. But it's basically a detailed report. Probably getting more details in the next couple of slides. So the reports that we produce are the annual consolidated financial report. About kind of what's in it, there's, there's basically four sections. So an introductory section provides an overview of the board, our organizational structure. It also has a transmittal letter for management on, on our position and things that we put in there. And then there's a section on financials, a lot of statistical data, then the independent auditor's report at the end of that. And then the CIFA, so may have heard this term or, or not, the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards. As you talked about, the, the federal dollars that we get each year, $132 million in FY24 is what we spent on federal awards. And for both of these audits, for the review, we also received an unmodified opinion for our federal awards, which is good, means it reflects our condition. However, um, we have findings, so we had 10 findings this year in the audits, and I'll talk more about those in more detail on the coming slides. But I did want to talk about what, what are deficiencies from an auditor's perspective. So there's really three broad categories. You have accounting errors and misstatements, you can have internal control weaknesses, or instances of non-compliance with rules and regulations. And then the two main categories, there are material weakness, which we prefer not to see on audit report, or significant deficiencies. But a material weakness indicates a reasonable possibility that material misstatement of an entity's financial statements will not be prevented or detected and corrected on a timely basis. And so that's, in fact, it indicates that we don't have controls in place or we need to do something better. Likewise, with a significant deficiency, it's, it's not as important as a material weakness, but it's also important enough to bring to the board's attention and to our management's attention that is something we need to work on. But why it matters? I think mostly it matters because of public trust. We want to have public to have trust in our financials and that we're doing the right thing with their dollars, and that we take action when we know that we have a problem we have to fix. It also helps with our bond rating. So we just finished, uh, our bond rating call with the Moody's and working on our, our misstep bond that we're going to issue. That bond rating has, um, can be affected by a poor audit. And also matters because internal controls, we want to fix things, we want to prevent fraud, we want to catch fraud if it's out there, and identify and against this season errors, and then of course help us do process improvement. And then just at the top, so the plan of act, so tonight, my consent agenda will be our plan of action that we'll go back to the Secretary of State, um, how we're gonna fix some of those deficiencies that were noted by the auditor. Just to talk briefly about the bond rating, so we currently enjoy a AAA bond rating.
Could we take a moment, just a moment here, and congratulate you and the administration for, for the work that it took to go through the interview process and to receive this AAA bond rating? I think it's really important. I, I received a note from my CPA friend on the right here suggesting that I call this out, but it's, it's very true, and, and thank you very much for that work.
It's a big hats off to the management team and also your board for supporting us. We do have our final call tomorrow with them, um, to provide the actual rating and a public, uh, announcement that we'll review.
Yeah, so, um, we have a short turnaround period from when Moody's will issue the rating and then for a review, so please, um, watch this week after that is final tomorrow. Then we will be issuing a press release, and I want to say, well, we're saying we have areas of improvement. Um, I think part of, uh, our culture here at Washington County and being a learning organization and coming to you and saying, hey, we have these findings, and we do have a planned approach to address these findings moving forward. And I just, I, I want to so appreciate the team because getting findings is not the easiest news for any of us to hear. That's not, and I'll say myself, but when you get the bad news, you have the opportunity and responsibility to lean into that and then determine a plan moving forward. So just want to give huge kudos to the team, um, and also huge kudos to the transition that we've been through. And I know, uh, John and Molly will probably speak to this a bit, but we have been, um, experiencing, my words, a desert of financial talent and expertise in this region. And so to even just manage our finances, day-to-day management in housing this last year, we've had to rely on Robert Half temps in order to do that. And so, um, really fortunate to new members, Sarah and Ryan, both joining the team and seeing, um, uh, really talent coming into Washington County. And frankly, I think that allows myself to breathe, I know John and Molly, to breathe, breathe, breathe a bit. Um, so looking forward to like this build back moment and just, I want your, I do not, and I've already spoke to how important bond rating is, it saves us money. It saves us money, and that is incredibly, incredibly important, not just for this 150 and misstep bonds, but as we look forward to what our future capital needs are. It is in the best interest of the taxpayers. And in my experience with bond rating calls, if they know your management practices are in place, meaning, yes, you may have bad news or things go wrong, but it's how you address them and you address them swiftly. That's incredibly important.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think, I, I don't know, John, you might want to explain a little bit about how that saves us money. But I remember the WACA bond several years ago went out at 75 million and sold for 94 million or something. So that's how we, because our bond rating is high enough and the interest rates are attractive, so investors pay more.
And I'm learning more about this as I go, I've never bombed before, so this is new to me. Um, but the process has been very good with our consultants helping us through the process. I did review the April 9th, 2019, uh, bond rating that we received. And that biggest thing that stuck out to me there was it did highlight the importance of management and support. And so that was telling, um, but also going all the way back to 2009, we had a double A2 rating. So I mean, the rating has improved over the years.
I'd like to learn more about, uh, why then and what the changes are, but not for right now.
Yeah, I would too. So I was thinking about, 2009 was a while ago, but, um, yeah.
So we can dive deep into it. I think you've heard me say this before, I, this is the space I kind of geek out in a bit. Yeah, so we, we can, we can dive, dive deeper into that because it does, um, it does also depend on your population base, your socioeconomics. So it's not just the county as a governmental entity, it's also, um, your community makeup too. So we can, yep, so we can provide more.
Yeah, in the suspect.
Correct, yep.
You're absolutely right. So now we're digging the schedule findings, and so really the main themes that we have are with turnover and training. I mean, those are the two things we have to get after. Um, and we're really working on getting the right people in place. I mean, the finance, my finance team had a huge turnover, losing our, our CFO, our deputy CFO, our chief accountant, our senior accountant, and our accountant to, all within a period of six months. And that was after this year, fiscal year closed, but it's, that's a time over process in trying to get the reports done. And so having that continuity is important, and having the right training in place and processes is important. So we're working on that. Now, if you wanted to comment on housing, that would.
Yeah, for the record, Molly Rogers, um, I'm the Director of Housing Services and the Housing Authority of Washington County. And I think we are a microcosm of perhaps some of the larger trends you have, we have all faced in central finance in terms of, we've had a really wholesale change in leadership. Um, and additionally to that, a change in our finance team and really needing to invest in our new hires and new, uh, and really about the organizational structure of how we are, how we have all grown, as we've seen in the budget that we just presented at HAWK. We've diversified in both sophistication, complexity, and many more business lines that I believe has resulted in the need for us to have additional training and subject matter expertise and how we understand those capital assets and understanding new ownership structures and new, um, uh, complex ways that we finance. We talk about bonds, but in, in the housing world we live in, we're, it's not just bonds, it's also different types of conventional mortgages as well as low income housing tax credits. And each of these deals is incredibly complex, and we do utilize, other auditors do that work, but we had to build the internal capacity and expertise at that time to really take that work on. So I just wanted to express my complete gratitude to John and, and Ms. Angie and, and our new hires, and really looking at this from a one Washington County approach. I think we're, we're in the same growth trajectory as the full county, and we are on the same trajectory to make sure that we are gonna be managing for, in our future together and making sure that these are addressed appropriately. In fact, we had already been making improvements underway, and I will just let you know that Ryan Bondsbach is, I think is a little bit veteran compared to our council, sort of seven weeks, already making a huge difference, and we're in the middle of our controller recruitment at this, at this moment. Um, so we'll go into a little bit more detail, but I just wanted to say that we do have action already underway and a findings here in particular for housing are, are been specific to our Housing Choice Voucher Program, our Continuum of Care Program, um, that we get from federal funds. And really, it's, um, we've already been implementing new procedures and the use of checklists to ensure secondary reviews on those reports and required, um, document retention. But we'll go into detail a little bit.
I just want to talk briefly about trends in audits. Um, so this year, we had 10 findings. In previous years, we had less, we had one in 2021, two in 2022, and one in 2023. So it's a bit, um, concerning to have an awful higher number of findings this year. And so I think we're on trajectory to, to, to fix those. Many of those on the material weaknesses identified, uh, from 22, 23, and 24, on the top there are kind of the same issues with staffing and training. And so those are things I pledge that we're gonna work on. And we are also getting tools in place, so we're gonna have a new ERP system that's gonna help us with that. And, um, and also working through, uh, looking at all of our financial policies and making sure they align with that and align with how we want to do business going forward. So, um, the other component I would say is getting the right personnel. HR is doing a class and comp study to make sure we have the right, um, job descriptions of the people we need to do the work and aligning those structures internally, so some of those things are in the works. And with that, we're gonna shift and talk about our recommendations for each of the 10. Some of them are grouped together, um, and this is how we're presenting the consent agenda night, the letter that will go to the audit division, Secretary of State, in the format of how we're gonna fix the audit recommendations.
Uh, for the record, Ryan Bondsbach, Deputy CFO of the Department of Housing Services and Housing Authority of Washington County. This first finding is within HAWK, the Housing Authority. It is a material weakness that our auditors found in our control environment over financial reporting. Um, we are addressing this already, um, like Molly and John have mentioned, through staffing, training, and updated procedures. Um, we are in the final stages of, uh, hiring a controller for the Housing Authority and DHS, filling out the rest of the management team. We have been relying on consultants, uh, to clean up our books and get us back to a point of regular month-end close so that we have good financial reports that management can review. Also investing in training for our existing staff, both for government financial management as well as the things specific to our industry, so low income housing tax credits, affordable housing development. And we are working with consultants specific to affordable housing development for those real estate transactions, uh, to build that expertise in-house.
Next three, I've lumped together findings two, three, and four, and they're all similar recommendations, which I talked about, just getting our staffing, uh, set and policy guidance, um, and ERP. But I'll just talk briefly, so the 002, um, was one that was just a finding that we reported, reported in the wrong fiscal year, and so, um, to me, that's a training issue. Um, and then 003 was a series of, of findings, um, items like reporting on capital assets, reporting grant information, doing reconciliations on a regular basis. reporting grant information, doing reconciliations on a regular basis. Things like that. And so the whole series of things that we're looking at as far as training needs.
So the 002, just to be clear, that those were transactions that were accurate but recorded in the wrong year?
Yes, correct. Yes. And then on 004, that, that is because the, the audit was late. And so that was a finding. We have ideally to get our financial reports done by December and then have them reported earlier. We haven't been on time for years. That's one of my goals also is to get our reports done on time.
This next grouping is all within the Housing Authority and it relates to the voucher program. So all kind of under the umbrella of vouchers. What the findings have in common are really the need to have secondary review, other than the staff preparing the report, the submission that we make to HUD or a rent reasonableness determination. And we're addressing it by have already implemented different workflows and protocols to make sure that those checks are built into the workflow prior to submitting to the report to HUD. We're also using a third-party rent reasonableness system to make that determination prior to voucher issuance or tenant move-in. So it was a number of different findings that have our commonality around making sure that we're double checking our work and having that bifurcation of duties so that somebody is preparing, somebody is reviewing prior to submission.
Is that creating a significantly, like it impacting the amount of time it's taking to process each of these or not?
It's not. I think a lot of the, the reasons related to staff turnover and the need to have policies more clearly documented. So I think prior, people were in most cases doing that extra review. It's just that during the course of the audit, we might have 10,000 transactions, they sample 25 and find an error or an omission in one or two of those. And so this was really just making sure the workflows are more clearly understood department-wide.
Okay, thank you.
I guess just to comment follow on on that is when we talk about internal control deficiencies, the first question then, so do we have any misappropriations, mishandling of funds or vouchers or those kinds of things? It sounds like we did not. We just needed to kind of get in there. And as you said, John, had some staffing, do some better training. And so that was what I was reading into this, that we had dodged that bullet. So that's good.
That's correct, Commissioner. I, I do want to emphasize that bigger point, and that was really important. There's been no identification of fraud, misuse of funds. Anyone who is ineligible got into housing. It's more of a checks and balance. Do we have an additional signatory on each of these, on, on every single person who moved into housing? So it, it's just making sure, back to that definition of what that weakness really is around the, it's more of a, we catch something that could have happened in, in the timely amount of time. And so, yes.
I just want to underscore that point. In the entire audit, there are no signs of fraud.
Thank you.
There are no signs of fraud. The purpose of internal controls, policies, and trainings is those are the tools that help prevent fraud. And so that's yep. And so that's where, why the auditors lift these types of, these types of findings up. So you can compare it to kind of preventative maintenance for facilities.
So the secondary review is really essential.
This next finding was related to required inspections for public housing units. So we, we agree with the findings the auditors identified. During the period that this audit took place, we were in the process of expanding the team of inspectors that we had to keep up with the increased number of units. We also were kind of on the backside of the pandemic where we had a backlog of units to be inspected that were delayed while the pandemic was going on. And we put new processes in place to make sure that we are proactively identifying the units that are coming up on that 24-month inspection window. So that before we, we get to their absolute due date, we've identified those and know that we can deploy our inspectors to prioritize those housing units. And this last one is also housing. This is part of the continuum of care program from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. There's a 25% match requirement in, for those funds for administering the program. In this case, we did budget and allocate for that 25%. What we don't have is the document retention to show that we reviewed during the course of the fiscal year to match the expenditures alongside the matching requirement. So we budgeted for it, we planned for it, we just don't have the documented review that we matched the expenditures up throughout the implementation during the fiscal year. And we have a, a new process in place to make sure that we do review throughout the fiscal year and match those expenditures up to make sure that we are meeting the 25% matching requirement.
All right, break us to the overview and discussion. Really, it's, it's a marathon. We're not a sprint. Need to fix, we need to fix things and make them well. And it takes time to hire people, it takes time to train people, takes time to write policies. But we're committed to do on all those things as we go forward. Open up for discussion or or guidance from the board.
Are there questions? We've got several of them along the way. Thank you for.
And I got to during, as a member of the audit committee, so well, no, I'm saying I've, I've already.
Yes, you've had your.
More than one bite at the apple.
Mr. Willie, do you have a question?
I, I just know, I was just going to make a comment that this is great when you read something like this, initially you have all kinds of things of concern. But you, you've addressed him. I read your report here, John and Molly, and so this is great. So I appreciate the fact that we have taken an aggressive approach to cleaning up this because this is very important. It seemed to me that in your position, one of the top priorities was making sure you hit your deadlines. And it's pretty doggone important that this not be late. And so I'm glad to hear that's a priority going on because we've got to do that.
I have a question. First of all, thank you. And I've read this report thoroughly. It's, it's really interesting. What is the, what's the employee response when there are material and significant findings identified? I, I, I'm curious, you know, how, how as a manager do you deal with that? Because I'm certain there's a response.
I can speak for the Housing Authority. Thank you for the question. It's really hard on them. And so I think the really important thing that we can do is coach through them that it's a learning opportunity. We are going to make steps to improve our situation and avoid it into the future. And that we have really strong support in order to do that from, from the board, from our executive leadership. So it is, it is difficult, right? They're a group of accountants. They like, they like to be, they like to be correct. And and they've been through really difficult transitions. And so making sure that the frontline employees aren't taking that as a personal failure has been really important.
Commissioner Willie, back to your question and comment a moment ago. This was discussed a little bit about at the audit committee, and I think it's important context to know that we are not likely to be able to just make everything perfect in your, sort of next year, in part because there's staff turnover that has happened and that is getting up to speed.
We're already there at June 25th.
But, but also the, the ERP implementation has, is going to, like, I, I just don't want you to expect next year to be like just completely.
Perfect?
Yes. I mean, even on the timing, like on the timing.
I completely get that. And that's a good point, Jason. Thank you for that. And I was pleased to hear that the ERP system that is going to help enhance the accuracy and the efficiency certainly of your department as well as a lot of others. So it's always good to hear that too. So thanks for pointing that out, Jason.
And, and I'd like to go back to my question earlier about the employees because I think it's really important that as commissioners, we, we understand what the situations are that the employees are in. The fact that they, we've had, there are barriers and it's very difficult to, to work when there are barriers there. But I think you're hearing from all of us, the commitment to make sure that those barriers are removed through the big opportunities like ERP, but also just through the, the personnel process and the recognition that it's important to have your, your policies and your people in place to be able to do the job effectively. And that I, I'm speaking for myself a bit here, but I just don't, I, I don't want this to be something negative for employees to absorb. But as you mentioned, an, an opportunity to learn and do things differently. I, we certainly, speaking for everybody here, but we certainly see that.
So if I can just add to that. So thank you for bringing the employee experience up. Because many times we have staff groups that really don't want their work in, in the public eye. And our finance teams are generally front and center of those groups. And from a leadership perspective, it is very important that we openly share where we're at and what is our roadmap to fix this. I'm going to shift to, from a governance perspective and your board. Fiduciary responsibility is a key role your board has. So while some of you don't have a finance background, making sure that we have strong financial position is a core function of your role. So I just, please make sure you hold us accountable to this plan too, because that is part of your governance responsibility. And thank you, Commissioner Snyder, for saying we will be, in essence, we're moving the ball forward and this won't all be fixed in one year. And that's where our new CFO was speaking to, it's a marathon, not a sprint.
Thank you. Or anything else that you need from us?
Support. Thank you. We really, we really appreciate the support that you provided.
Absolutely. Please extend the appreciation to the entire staff. Alrighty. With that, we are headed into a break. We are scheduled to reconvene at 3:15, which is right, we're late already. But I, would you like to take five, 10 minutes before we go into executive session? Is 3:30 okay? Okay. Yes?
So it is so since we're going to executive, if you want to make a motion to go in the executives, then we can.
Yes. I'd like to get a motion, please, to go into an executive session, RRS 192.6600 sub 2 sub D.
I move that.
Second. All those in favor? See you back here at 3:30. Thank you, Kevin.
No reflection on our current leadership. We're already five minutes behind.
No.